Pretty convinced that everyone's getting their Timbers check on.
Oh yeah, it's been owned for a long time. Run zone.
That gets you like one little.
They want, they want.
We know who those people are.
We just watch everyone else's works. One year we had some really bad ones. I was like, Mom, I don't know what you think about this, but Sam Canoe's trying to come and spring it for us. She had them out there last week and it's great. You get a little bit of them.
I think they've offered them as high as eighty grand.
We like couldn't sit on the deck.
And I think they probably bought it for about ten to fifteen.
Now we spray and it's good. And then we get the neighbors down too.
You come understand people fresh and all.
Keep paying the assessment.
Comes up pretty quick too, red old lines.
I had one out there one time too.
Good evening, everyone. I ask that you would all each rise for the invocation, follow my pledge of allegiance. Bound by all life, you call us to live in community and teach us to care for one another. We pray for those whose position and authority affect the lives of others. Please inspire them with a vision of community as it might be. For love of neighbor and concern for one another, drive out discontent, strife, anxiety and fear. Help us to work together with one heart and will, with sympathy and understanding to serve the common good and to minister to people in trouble and despair and multiply true happiness among us. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is five thirty, Monday, July sixth, two thousand twenty. I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please. Here. 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 Here.
Here.
Yeah. Forum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor members. I hope you're all doing well. We don't have any additions to the agenda this evening, so as presented.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Thank you, Caroline. Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That resolution, I'm sorry, that motion is approved. Under public hearing, tonight we have a public hearing for City Project five nine five six, which is the two thousand twenty Burlington Avenue Street Improvement Project. I'm going to call on our city engineer, Brian Yvart. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor and members of the council. Yes, tonight is a final cost hearing for public improvement five two seven one, also referred to as combined project five nine five six. This is, individual assessment notices have been sent to the benefiting properties, and they're included in your packet for those receiving the special benefit from this improvement project. Other than general inquiries, I have not received any objections to this project. So just to give a recap background, this is a final cost hearing. This is reconstruction projects of the sanitary sewer, water, main storm sewer, and services, both sanitary and water, and Batumis Street sections. The location is Burlington Avenue. It's, here's a refer to the title sheet on the projector here. Burlington Avenue extending from Mount Faith to Randolph Avenue and the alley of Glen Way from Burlington Avenue to the East Terminus. As noted today is the hearing dates for proposing an interest rate of four percent, assessment of fifteen years. Yes, estimated special assessment rates for Batumis Street with curb and gutter, only five ton design, is based on construction prices recently received. It's at seventy dollars and sixty-three cents per linial foot. I want to just note that the preliminary hearing, the proposed at that time was ninety-one dollars and twenty-eight cents, so quite a good savings. Next page in your pack is a budgetary breakdown with the special assess Batumis Street ton, five ton design. We're estimating a total project cost include engineering, fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents. The city share of Batumis Street at five ton is fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. The city share for Batumis nine ton street design plus the extra width, two hundred and eight-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fourteen cents. City share for sanitary services, hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. City share for water main and services is a hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-six and seventy-five cents. City share for storm sewer, forty-four thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, for a total combined project cost of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. We're proposing funding this through combination, mentioned the PR bond, special assessments for residents, MSA's street construction funds, sanitary sewer, water fund, and storm water enterprise funds. So at this time, Your Honor, I'm requesting you open up the hearing for this improvement project.
Thank you, Brian. And we will do that now. We'll open the public hearing for the Burlington Avenue Street Improvement Project, City Project five nine five six. Anyone wishing to speak to that, please step to the lecture. See no one. See no one. We will close the public hearing, and it's back to the council. We will need a resolution adopting the final cost assessment for this project. Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Scott. Second, any?
I'll second it.
Yeah, we got a resolution in a second. Any questions for Brian?
I just got a ancillary, ancillary kind of question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Timing of the project with school. Completion of the project happen before fall, or what's the schedule on?
Yes, very good answer. We're proposing substantial completion this fall. However, you know, if we want to go back and discuss how we're holding this final cost hearing as we are right now prior to the awarding. Mentioned the resolution is awarding the final, adopting the final assessment rules contingent on awarding the next item, which is the construction project. Based on objections, which we're receiving none, I'd be my recommendation award, which will fast track the schedule. If we, council did want it to delay, based on the objections, there's generally thirty day appeal period plus a ten day notice to district report, so that's all based on feedback that we're getting right now from just having this hearing right now.
Thank you. Any other questions, Scott?
A simple question. What does M S A S stand for?
Municipal State Aid. It's construction. That's a municipal state aid route within our designated, within the city limits.
Municipal State Aid S. What's the S N at the end?
Streets system.
Streets, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions before we call for the roll call, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. We can award that bid this evening as well, so we would have a resolution to award that bid for Project five nine five six to R.L. Larson Escrevating in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents. Brian, do you have anything to add on that?
No, Your Honor. Other than we received nine electronic bids. On the bid opening was June eighteenth. The apparent low was R.L. Larson submitted lowest bid in amount four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents. The tabulation of bids is included in your packet. The engineer's estimate was six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We've reviewed and we recommend that this be awarded, especially given the assessment rules were just adopted for this project.
Sure, certainly.
I'll file, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
One second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution awarding the construction services contract for public improvement five three three one, which is the twenty twenty millon overlay project of the county highway, special, the trail. And I'll call on Brian again.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thursday, on Thursday, June twenty-fifth, sealed bids were open for this project. I have a location map up on the projector right now. This includes portions, it's received a millon overlay of Alcott, the west side of Lake Alice and the Cassaw One Trail adjacent basically from the bridge to where it meets Otter Tail County. Otter Tail County's jurisdiction. These were all included, but however, we did bid it with a base bid and alternate. Markley Asphalt Paving was the apparent low that submitted a total base bid plus alternate bid of two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Our estimate at the time of construction was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred. Tabulation once again is included for a further review. We've reviewed the bid results and conducted a post-bid interview with Markley. Everything seems to be in good order. So with the construction base contract if awarded with Markley, construction contract increase of twenty-five percent, which I'm also included in the second item, to look to expand other additional streets based on the good favorable bids, with the construction contingency, engineering design, and some subs costs, I'm estimating a total project cost of about two, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Second sheet for funding, showing the budgeted millon overlay, the annual seal coat amount that we're trying to carry over, parked department capital outlay funds, and supplementing a little bit with MSA maintenance fund. As you can see, sufficient funds are available to proceed with this project. So at this time, I'm requesting awarding the construction services contract to Markley Asphalt and Paving in amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, and then also authorization as well to increase, add to the base contract up to twenty-five percent per statute.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to offer?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Anthony. I have a question, Brian. So on the, on the trail you said from the bridge, is that, you're talking about the bridge between Wright and Hoot Lake?
Yes, correct.
And then that goes out on County one to?
Further, yes, farther east, northeast, yes.
And how about this side of the, the bridge? I mean, do we have any plans for that? That's in pretty rough shape as well.
We do have some plans. We've, 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 we've removed and replaced, I believe, quite a few hundred feet a year prior to.
Sure.
And we're going to continue looking at the area, but just based with funds, this is what we could fit into our schedule. We might look at that based on these prices too. That might be upper part of that twenty-five percent. Upon further review.
Question, yeah. Okay, thank you, Brian. Any other questions for Scott?
I think that we'll hear a lot of positive comments about including the west side of Lake Alice. So for the, for the sake of announcement, I guess I just wanted to point out that that was included.
Well, thank you. And I, I just want to note too on Lake Alice, this was done, the same strategy was done as we done the east side, I think, back in twenty sixteen. We're not proposing to, to save on cost, mill anything. We're just proposing to do minimal standards, overlay and a little bit of patchwork. That's not quite traditional with our other millon overlay streets where we build the entire surface. So that's how we did the east side, so that's how we're proposing. That's included in these bid prices right now.
Thank you, Brian. Other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Brian. There are no petitions or communications. Under the consent agenda, there's four items. I know Anthony has asked for items or to be removed. Any, anything else? Removed? If not, I would entertain a resolution to approve items one and two.
So moved.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving election judges for August eleventh, two thousand twenty primary election. I believe there's, someone's name was mentioned twice as that.
Yeah, I just, under first ward, first ward, first and second precinct, Sandy Rufe's name had been duplicated. And I know the roofers are everywhere, but I'm not sure that they could be in two places at one time. So I just wanted to point that out outside of that. I have no issues and would make a resolution if it's corrected.
Sure.
It's simply a typo, but I will put a plug in because Sandy Rufe did double, or volunteered for double shifts. That's what he named it after.
All right, thanks, Anthony. You got the resolution.
Another question, yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead, Scott.
The last line under the listing of the various names lists the alternates, and there are four or five names of alternates, and the end of the sentence reads, "and others as needed." And how are those others determined should that need arise?
Trying to plan for staffing the election during COVID has been very interesting because not everybody's comfortable being in that position. As long as they have the correct training, and we're doing the online training system this year, which we're going to put out to all judges. So some people just said unless the situation with, their health situation improves, they wouldn't be willing to do it, but they might be able to later, so we always give ourselves a little wiggle room, but they are certified training election judges at Gold Run.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lynn. Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution approving the final replat of Aspen for Sundance as requested by Frontier Ventures LLC. And I believe Anthony just wanted to have a look at the.
It might be a scene. That was, but I know there's a legal description, but it's very hard to visualize the legal description. And I would like to see the actual physical plat as to how it's intended to be laid out. And I think Brian was going to have that for us.
There we go. Western Avenue to the north, Otter Tail Drive bounded on the south, north being up on the projector.
Yep. So the one road will go all the way through and the other one's going to be a cul-de-sac?
Correct.
That's twenty-seven lots, isn't it?
Nineteen.
The original plat was twenty-seven.
The original was twenty-seven.
Yes, the original one that was vacated, Aspen, was about, yeah, twenty-seven. There's also a preliminary utility layout too that's also in a packet as well.
And then the lighter diagonal lines, those are the old lines, and then the more, the more bolder east-west, north-south type lines, those were the revised or the newer version, correct?
Yes, essentially, those, those are reflective of the old plat, plat that were vacated, result, the new boulder lines, yes, are of that. So essentially, yes, you go from, I'd say, twenty-seven to what you see before you right now.
And then that link that goes from the bottom of the cul-de-sac to the west and south, that doesn't actually, that's not going to be a street. That'll be a lot, right?
No, that will, that would be, that's correct. That's vacated.
Thanks.
Because I think that bottom, sort of like southeast corner is probably unbuildable anyway. Because it's kind of like a.
It's based on topography, yes. Coming for, coming through from the cul-de-sac going to, as once was dedicated at the time, that's extremely, extremely steep slopes and everything, so.
Is that why it's a cul-de-sac and not a freeway then too?
Part of the reason, yeah. And then for geometric, for street cars and everything, it was just never, never served for what the developers' intent wanted to be at this time.
Thank you. I think he's got one more picture he was going to show us.
Oh.
No, you got another picture there? Okay.
Yeah, I may have to zoom out on this one. This was just a conceptual site layout, meeting with engineers and developers we've met on site to review a lot of some of the concerns, primarily stormwater and utility levels as well. So key features, the blue indications of proposed water main, adjacent to sanitary sewer, eight inch sewer mains, and some of the storm sewer, I want to point out, outlot for storm, permanent stormwater management has been reserved. We're looking to enhance that stormwater pond to meet your requirements. And using a series of storm sewer piping to convey all the water to that along with curb and gutter as well.
Yeah, because I mean, that was a concern of obviously the residents in the kind of the upper north kind of west corner was that slope on the, on the west side that runs into their backyards.
Correct. And where we'll be collecting a lot. That runoff, runoff that is being conveyed to that area.
Yeah, so it's going to come into the street.
Into the street, curb and gutter, catch basins, to the pond.
That's the intent.
Where does the pond run to then?
Beneath Otter Tail Drive, south. I can't remember precisely where that goes, just north of the water wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that resolution.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Justin. Any further questions, Scott?
Just a quick question for Brian. That outlot enhancement, when that's all done, is that going to be fenced in like the one up at the corner of Broadway and Fur on the north end of town? Or will it just be open? Or maybe haven't decided yet, but.
Well, we haven't generally decided. We follow NERC guidelines, which refer to standards for pond design, which includes not only the sizing, sediment removal of ponds, but also natural vegetation for cooling the water. So effectively, by the time it does reach that outlets and everything, it is treated in any form. So there's guidelines that we have to follow. So yes, we're still working on that, what treatments are going to be.
Maybe, or maybe not a fence.
Pardon?
A fence, maybe or maybe not a fence around it?
Uh, it's best, we haven't quite got that far, no. Perhaps not on that, but we can definitely take a look at it. If we think the slope designs and everything, it warrants that, we will look at that.
For what it's worth, I like them better without a fence, but I suppose for safety reasons, if they're deep enough, you probably have to do that.
Well, and that's a very good question too, because a lot of the newer designs does take in account for kids around these ponds, because they are all over everywhere you go, anywhere. And yes, there's benching, things like that, like I mentioned, contour, especially to help if there is a bystander that does go down the pond, to maintain access getting out, which you're covering, getting them out.
Thank you.
All right, we have a resolution in a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have the second reading of ordinance four eighth series, which is the rezoning of GNS Holdings LLC Von Properties from B two to I two. That's been before us, it's been introduced. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney. If not, we'll, roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That ordinance is approved. Under, item number two is a discussion on a resolution, potential resolution rescinding the local COVID-nineteen emergency declaration. I'll call on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor members. This is on the agenda this evening because I had a few council members reach out and ask me to include this this evening for consideration by the city council. It's certainly up to the city council to decide when the appropriate time is to end the local designated emergency as it relates to the pandemic. As I stand before you today, if I were to make a case as to why it should continue on, I would say a few different things. I talked to Chief Bergen just before the meeting, and he may have something to add at the end here, but some of the funding opportunities that we have specifically like the FEMA reimbursement funding are directly tied to these local declaration of emergencies. So to be eligible for some of those funding opportunities, you may have to have this local emergency in place. We have submitted a request to FEMA already, so if there's additional expenses, that would be something to keep in mind, to need this designation in place. The other way that this emergency declaration has benefited the community, I would say, is it's given us the flexibility to work with our local businesses as they've had very difficult times, obviously, and much uncertainty with various closures. So for example, we were able to allow the restaurants downtown to have the sandwich boards out on the sidewalks, designating pickup spots and some of those things as they were forced to be closed, which our general ordinances wouldn't allow us to do. We also were able to allow some businesses that were really struggling to have additional signage opportunities along Union Avenue and places that ordinarily wouldn't have happened. And then probably most recently, we were able to rent out picnic tables to restaurants as they began to open up outdoor seating opportunities, which we were able to do outside of our fee schedule. We did that for a dollar to help those businesses out rather than charge what our, what our fees would be. Without this emergency declaration, staffs really back to needing to enforce the ordinances as they're written, including the fee schedule and some of those other things. We don't have that flexibility outside of this local emergency. The other thing I would, I would say is the hospital's still projecting that the peak for our local area is ahead of us. They've said all along it's going to be late summer, and we just haven't been impacted here, which is why it's probably come up to end this local emergency. I certainly can appreciate and agree with that point of view as well. And then just finally here, the talk over the last week has been related to the potential for additional closures. If the cases don't slow down and folks don't begin taking things more seriously, and I would hate to have the state make a decision to that effect and then have the city be in a position where they don't have the ability to respond accordingly to the business needs if there were additional closures forthcoming. In, in talking with Chief Bergen before the meeting, he had a really good suggestion. If the council decides to keep this in place, we would be fine with that. If the council decides to terminate this tonight, we're fine with that as well. But perhaps we could state that we're going to keep this in place if that's the direction, in conjunction with the state of Minnesota. So when the state determines that the emergency has ended, the local emergency could end at that time as well. So I thought that was a good suggestion, as clearly there's, you know, reasons that this could continue on at the state level and also the local level for similar reasons related to funding. I don't know, Kyle, do you have anything else you want to add?
I would just say that it's, it's so uncertain what the governor's, I mean, one person can write an order and the whole state has to follow law. And that order can come out overnight. So for, for me, that's been the biggest thing during this pandemic. And at the beginning, we think it's more of a health emergency and we're planning for that, but as this thing has kind of drug on, this has really become more of an economic emergency, and I just think we're better suited to keep it in place to, as Andrew pointed out, to try to address some of the issues that are impacting our local businesses, and it gives us that flexibility. So as long as the governor has that authority to issue these executive orders, just kind of at a whim, why would we handicap ourselves by not being able to respond, you know, appropriately or adequately to, to help out local businesses? So I would just kind of echo what Andrew said.
Thanks, Chief.
I just maybe have one comment or question. It sounds like everything you pointed out was an advantage. Is there a disadvantage why we wouldn't keep it in place? I mean, I, it doesn't sound like there is one.
There's, there's really no impact to keep it in place other than, you know, folks in town could argue that it hasn't impacted Fergus Falls from a health emergency standpoint, like Kyle mentioned, as it has other communities who have this ongoing, but there's no implications to keep it going. Does it, there's no negative.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Anthony?
Could you expand a little bit on the FEMA funding opportunity? I mean, if there's an advantage to keep it in place to get funding, then I'm all for free money.
No, and that's, you know, if you look back to March when we talked about enacting the order originally, a lot of it was based on getting FEMA funds for the pandemic. And then also, you know, I think maybe the second issue that Rolf talked about a little bit was just how we operate as, as a government body and not having all to be here during, during meetings. So the first FEMA grant that was submitted, I think, did require the emergency declaration. And in talking with Ryan, I believe that grant was already submitted, and it, and it only went up. submitted, and it, and it only went up to, I wanna say roughly around June first, end of May, June first. So that FEMA window is still open from, you know, that point until who knows how long, so that if we do incur other expenses, um, you know, for the pandemic, we can reapply for more or additional funding at that time. Uh, so again, I don't think it hurts us to, to leave the, uh, the order in place. If anything, it just kind of gives us that flexibility. Uh, we, we applied for some other grants. Some required that you had a declaration, others did not. So I just think, uh, you know, for me, the biggest thing is, is really the governor and his ability or power to issue these executive orders. As long as those powers are in place at the state level, I just think it would behoove us to have the same flexibility at a local level to kind of respond to whatever might come at us next, so.
Thanks. Any other?
I would, I don't know if you want a motion, but I would, if, if, if we were to keep it in place, I would make the, make the motion that we mirror the state's emergency, you know, ruling, so if the state terminates, then we terminate.
Sure. Yeah, and I think that, uh...
Make a resolution.
I'm making that a resolution.
So there's a resolution.
The city of Fergus Falls mirror, mirror what the state of Minnesota does from an emergency declaration perspective.
Sounds good. Someone like to second that resolution?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions?
I did have one question.
Go ahead, Brent.
Since a few councilmen did request, you know, on this, has there had been any negative impact with this at all?
Your honor, councilman Thompson, from staff's perspective, no. Um, I haven't gotten any feedback either way. Um, it doesn't look like Kyle.
No, and, and I would just say that we, as a city, haven't abused that power. You know, we, other than helping businesses and apply for grants, as a city entity, we have not taken any actions past any emergency resolution. So I don't think there's been an abuse of power, uh, on the city's standpoint of anything. It's been a proactive measure to help our own community.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I mean, if, if there hasn't been anything negative, I wouldn't see a reason why to remove it right now.
I agree. Any other, thank you, Brent. Any other questions, comments? We have a resolution? Go ahead, Scott.
I would suppose that from the public's point of view, since the sense of impact here has been relatively small in Fergus Falls locally, they may think that it might be thought that, um, if we were to drop this emergency declaration, it would essentially send a signal to those beyond here to say, you know, "We're done with this, maybe you should be done with it too," that kind of a thing. But to the degree that this, maintaining this declaration allows us, uh, potential of some funding opportunities, I'm perfectly okay with keeping it in place, and I'll vote for the resolution.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions, comments? Rule call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign and submit the Coronavirus Relief Fund or the CARES Act certification form, and again, I'll call on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, your honor members. Also related to the COVID-19 crisis, the federal government passed the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, as you probably all have heard, referred to as the CARES Act, um, which sent money to the state level to then trickle down to local governments. And just recently, on June 25th, Governor Walz announced a plan to distribute $841 million in federal funds to Minnesota cities, counties and townships. Um, in Fergus Falls, we have been slated under the formula, which is per pupil or per, per resident, um, $1,035,000. And, um, so what we need to do is submit a certification form to the state of Minnesota, which then, uh, six to eight days following that, they'll release the funds to the local government. We have a tax levy committee meeting scheduled later this week to begin talking about, um, how we're gonna recommend the appropriate use of these funds. There are a lot of parameters as it relates to these funds, and really, the, the test for these funds is, is three things. One, are they necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19? Two, they must not be accounted for in the 2020 city budget. And three, they must, uh, the expenses must be incurred during the period beginning March 1st, 2020 and ending December 1st, 2020. They cannot be used for revenue replacement, and they can also not be, um, used for things that we've looked at, getting other funding or, or reimbursement mechanisms related to, such as the FEMA funds we just talked about. Um, any aid of that $1,035,000 that we don't spend by November 15th must be sent to Otter Tail County, and then, uh, the county has time to spend those funds. If they don't, they must be returned to the state and ultimately the federal government. So because we are receiving funds in excess of $750,000, we will be required to have a federal single audit, and, um, I'll let Bill speak more about that in a second here, but it really does add a level of scrutiny to the, to the, um, distribution of these funds and ensures that they're following the guidelines as provided by the federal government when they release these funds. So, um, the, the action this evening is to give me authorization to sign and submit the Coronavirus Relief Fund certification form. Again, we submit that to the state. The next date that we can do that is on July 20th, and then we can expect about a week after that to see the funds. We will put a, a process in place for folks to, um, ask for monies. I've already had seven organizations in town reach out and ask if they can have some of the CARES Act funding, of course. Uh, we need to talk about what that looks like, and that's what the tax levy committee will start to do, ultimately bringing recommendations back before the city council as to how those funds should be spent. Um, but we certainly need to take care of our own costs and things like that first prior to, to going beyond the city, so. I don't have anything else unless anybody has any questions, otherwise I'll have Bill just quickly talk about the importance of that audit and how we need to ensure that the, the funds are spent in an appropriate manner.
Thanks, Andrew. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, um, we, the city receives federal funds most every year, and the threshold is $750,000 of federal expenditures. So, um, let's say we were to receive, you know, us, an amount over that, but if we didn't expend those dollars, it's tied to when you expend them. Um, so likely with receiving an allocation over a million dollars, we'll have a single audit. We had one last year, uh, related to the Lincoln Avenue project. That takes place during the same time we have our regular financial audit. The auditors just have to do additional work and additional testing, where they actually look at those major federal programs and make sure we've abided by the laws. And it's, it's guided under what's called uniform guidance, so, um, you know, certain, all these certain criteria that we would need to follow. The other thing, if we pass these funds on to other organizations, that would be sub, um, recipient reporting, we'll have to be on top of that and making sure that how they're being used by those other organizations still qualify, um, under this, under this program. So that's kind of the, the extra requirements with that, is that, um, monitoring of where the money goes from here. In other words, we wanna make sure those federal funds are used appropriately, um, after they leave us as well. So, and we'll, we'll be charged with keeping track of that, and the city will be audited for how they're used elsewhere. So that's, we're gonna meet with the tax levy committee and start developing that program.
Just a question on the, the cost, obviously, for the audit. Uh, this would be an additional cost, which it has been in the past. Does that come out of the split part between the city and these funds, or does it all just come out of the city's?
Um, no, for instance, last year, it, it was like an additional three or $4,000 is what that single audit, it's called, and that's the, the term for a federal audit is a single audit. And we charge that to the program that caused that. That was that Lincoln Avenue program. So we'll look if we could do the same here, but actually, we won't, because as I speak, those costs have to be incurred prior to November, do we say 15th?
December 1st.
December 1st.
December 1st.
Um, and then there's a 90-day from there, so we won't get billed for that audit until in 2021, so no, that'll be a city cost. Yep.
Minimal for the...
Right.
Thank you, Bill.
But it's a good question.
Would you like to offer that resolution? Before we have further discussion? Thank you, Caroline. Second, resolution is second?
I just want, your honor members, I just wanna reiterate too, um, I, I heard some commentary in the last couple of weeks that this is an open checkbook. Uh, that is not the case with these funds. The city's not getting a million dollars to spend as they please. It's not going to the, to the Riverfront project or to an amphitheater, like I saw, uh, being talked about. These are expenses related to the COVID-19 pandemic that have been, um, incurred by the city of Fergus Falls or other organizations that receive these funds. Um, we do not have great flexibility with these funds. The criteria that I read out come directly out of federal guidance, and to Bill's point, we're gonna ensure that these funds are spent appropriately, um, no matter where they end up or, or where they are distributed. So not an open checkbook. It's not like we're getting a million dollars to, to do what we want locally. This is strictly related to, um, costs incurred related to COVID-19.
Thanks, Andrew.
And we will be audited on that, so.
So that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we vote? Verifications? Rule call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Asleep.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the purchase of parcel D in the amount of $4,235.26 for Mike and Sierra Walz for the property located in 102 East Summit. And we'll call on our city engineer.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, front of the map is an exhibit associated with this acquisition. This is a parcel D acquisition, southeast quarter of section 35, township 133, range 43, uh, with the location as the East, East Summit Avenue where it meets Otter Tail River. Uh, for the past few months, state staff and state attorney have, we've been having negotiations with the adjacent residents, rivers which reside in this area, uh, within the city limits. Um, essentially, we've been trying to address, addressing ingress, egress concerns, city maintenance responsibility, and the subsequent space needs associated with city acres. Uh, due to the new right-of-way shown on the exhibit, I understand it's hard to read, but I can, uh, we're looking at the yellow section there in East Summit to acquire, which is privately held, uh, which consists of an eight-foot by 240-foot strip of land, 1,925 square feet. Uh, this strip of land would provide a more consistent 33-foot, uh, right-of-way to help assist with some of the needs, uh, with city maintenance needs as well. Uh, and I know, uh, city attorney Ralph Nickamol here, he's been a part of negotiations. Uh, we arrived at those prices, uh, but I think both parties are in agreements. Uh, we're looking to fund this through municipal state aid maintenance funds, this amount, so at this time, I'm requesting a resolution for the purchase of parcel D, amount of $4,235.26.
Thank you, Brian. Any, someone like to offer that resolution? Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Justin. Questions for Brian?
Questions?
Go ahead, Scott.
Is that piece of property paved or dirt, or what is it? It's along the street, so it's...
That, that's green space currently right now. And I don't believe we have any intentions of making any improvements to it at this time, other than general space needs for, um, plowing snow.
Other questions? Rule call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Brian. Uh, item number five is the River Oak Meadows and River Oaks Village Development. Two items there. One, first is an update on the multi-use trail extension along Alcott Avenue from River Oaks Village to Tower Road. Brian, did you wanna give us an update on that?
Yes, thank you. Uh, on June 1st, the city council requested additional information in regards to the connections, connectivity for the trail network, uh, located in regards to this site, uh, which is bounded, uh, to the west is the Roundabout, south is Alcott Avenue, excuse me, and to the north is West Side Drive. So I prepared this map to have a better understanding, and I also color-coded it as well, so if you wanna refer to, let's just start out with, uh, on the very top of the map is the River Oaks Landing that was constructed, I believe, in 2015, 2016. I'm referring to this as a green segment. This is an eight-foot multi-use trail, uh, that connected part of the, the River Oaks Landing Development. This was, this provided connectivity from Tower Road to West Side Drive. Funding for this particular segment was through a tax abatement agreement. The next segment we're looking at is what's proposed, uh, with the River Oaks Meadows and River Oaks Village Phase II site development. Look in the map, that's the, everything back and hatch is a proposed layout of the buildings. Plat's been approved, everything at this point. There was some discussion too, uh, about the council's, um, council's desires if they wanted to entertain another tax abatement agreement, uh, which we think the developer's gonna be proposing. But this blue segment represents the alignment northbound, north and south along the east side of the property, and then it veers to the west on, along the north side of Alcott. This once again is an eight-foot multi-use trail associated with this project. At this time, I'm, I believe they're gonna be proposing a tax abatement agreement to help fund this project. The third segment is, I could call it the yellow segment. Uh, this is a potential eight-foot extension that could complete the connectivity, connect, connectivity from the blue segment to the existing trail, um, right there in the northeast quadrant of the Roundabout. Um, and that's being, this is about a 500-foot trail, estimated cost about $80,000. Uh, we still, we have not done any design, engineering, just some plenary cost estimates. There will be some acquisitions too for trail right-of-way as well that would be needed, however, we do not know these costs. So, like I said, this was an update in regards to that request, and I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
So at this point, we don't have the request for the abatement from the developer, correct? You're anticipating that's gonna come forward, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
At that point, it'll be to decide whether we want to...
Yeah, your honor, councilmembers, um, the developer's hoping to get some feedback. If the council's willing to entertain this trail connection, they'll go forward with the abatement request. They don't wanna to go through the process of requesting an abatement and incurring that cost if the city council's not, um, wanting or willing to entertain a, a trail, in this case, the blue segment on Brian's map, um, as it relates to this project. The developer's fine either way. Um, he's offering up use of that land for this purpose, but, uh, would request a tax abatement in return to, uh, fund the construction of that.
I think it makes, I think it makes good sense, but I also think, um, we kinda need to have the yellow connectivity, otherwise the trail's gonna end in some of these side lots. So I think, you know, I'd like to see if we have the ability to refine that yellow section, 'cause I, I think it makes complete sense, but it'd be nice to finish that loop if we're gonna do it.
Sure.
And I don't know how long that takes, and I don't wanna delay their project either, so.
Oh, your, your honor, councilman Armson. No, I, I, I believe we can maybe have more information and proceed or initiate the yellow segment, final design, but I think I would kind of wait until we get this, uh, blue segment solidified with the tax abatement agreement, and then at that time, uh, we could possibly start to look at this yellow segment as well. I've spoken with the adjacent neighbors right there, and comments thus far, they're very positive in regards to this, and not only the utility availability, that's also associated with this project as well.
Do we, do you have any idea of what the amount of tax abatement they're gonna ask for, for the blue segment? I mean, you know, if, if the yellow segment is 80, is it like 160 for kind of like the blue one?
I don't have in front of me... We've had those plenary discussions as long as the split, and I, I can't recall if it was 60, 40.
Yeah, 140.
I think it's probably 160, and that's, so we're working on those numbers right now, but I think it'd probably fall in lines with, uh, mimicking the original tax abatement agreement, which we presented to the council.
Yeah, your honor, that would be, um, the proposed number that we've been talking about, $140,000 over 10 years. So it'd be $14,000 abatement per year, um, which the city's share of the taxes would exceed that $14,000 amount, not by much, but, um, it would certainly cover what that tax abatement was, and of course, we would only pay up to the amount that we received of the city's portion of those taxes, so, looking at a 10-year abatement.
So you're looking for some direction, though? If that's, um, is the developer's looking for some direction? some direction? How do others feel about?
I think it makes sense to go ahead and do it.
I've got a question.
I feel like it gives them a little buffer, too, between those places that are already there.
And that's, that's existing, it'd be right along that line of trees, correct, off of, there's a line of trees there currently, right?
Essentially, field review. Our attempt would be a preliminary design is to keep it on the out slope, in slope, then closest to the road, and get that little extra buffer there. There may be some site clearing, but we haven't clearly got to that development.
I would agree with Councilmember Marlinson that if we're going to do the blue segment, we should be serious about the yellow segment, too.
Yeah. So you can, we can bring some more information at some point.
Certainly.
Again, yeah, like now is the time to do this blue trail, because it's the only time we're going to have the opportunity to do the blue, so.
Your Honor, if I may, there's opportunities anytime when you got, let's say, the construction of blue trail and then adding to a contract, pricing by volume.
Sure.
So there are some benefits. So I think when we get to, I guess, with the tax abatement, however that folds out, we will definitely try to see how we could incorporate this yellow segment into the overall design.
Certainly. That'd be a good idea. Yes, Scott.
The development, as it's put together with the street in there and the parking lot and all that, that's not a city street, though. That's the developer's cost entirely for the road, right?
Correct.
So what the city gets for this abatement is this nice wide trail, which is actually kind of an upgrade from any typical sidewalk. At no cash out of pocket, we just don't get the taxes over a 10-year period, correct? That's how that ends up getting paid for? I think it's a good deal for the city to support this blue trail segment, and then as we can, do the yellow segment. If it happens at the same time and is efficient, that's great. If it happens and we budget for it in the next year or the next, you know, down the line, it, you know, I can see it would be nice to get it all in one package, but it wouldn't have to be. I mean, if we came down to where, yeah, we just didn't want to spend that $80,000 while, we could wait, or we could spread it out over a couple of years or something, I would think, right?
Yes.
Tie it into some other project that's going further on or something?
Well, and the next item on the agenda, too, is in regards to utilities. So in regards, in addition to the trail, it's not to mention the utility designs and the enhancements the council approved to broaden the expansion area, the capabilities with these services.
Sure. All right. So does that give you the information you need right now, I think, for item one?
I believe so.
Okay, great. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city engineer and the city attorney to execute permanent and temporary street utility easements for this property located at 1413 Alcott Avenue West.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The city sanitary sewer and water main, that's proposed in association with this River Oaks Meadows and River Oaks Village Development, is proposed to terminate along the south side of Alcott. In order to complete these installations as designed, a permanent and temporary construction easement is required from the adjacent owner that resides at 1413 Alcott Avenue. During the research, it was also determined Alcott Avenue itself lies within an easement dedicated for highway purposes only versus being dedicated as a right-of-way and utilities. So because of this, I had interstate engineering, who's been retained by the developer and the city to help with this project. The attached exhibit up there illustrates the three easements and associated, that are also included in your packet, which is a temporary and permanent. The one indicated in blue is the permanent easement that we'd like to retain for street and utility purposes. The 10 by, I can't recall what, it's 10-foot wide, it's the green.
120.
Is it 120? Thank you. The green area is going to be reserved as a perpetual easement for utility purposes only. And the yellow segment there is going to be temporary construction easement, temporary being upon completion and restoration on behalf of the city. It will be released back to the property owner. However, it's needed to facilitate the construction of the water main and sanitary sewer. I contacted the owners at 1413 Alcott to discuss this request. They're very much amenable at this time, and they're very supportive of it. This property is currently served by a private well and septic system. In negotiation for these easements at this time, I've done some comparisons and calculated some square foot pricing from Otter Tail County's land, land and resources site. And I also did some comparisons of previous service connections, similar sewer and water, just to have a baseline to see what we're proposing and what they're proposing is reasonable, and I believe it is. So in churn for these easements, as described in this exhibit, the owners are requesting connection, service connections to the city utilities. They do have one further request, and that is that the city will also waive the water availability charge fee, which is currently 450 bucks. I said I would talk to the council members about this, and it'd be my recommendation based on the cost and everything. That is a very reasonable request, what we're proposing and what the residents would like to see as well. So at this time, I'm requesting to authorize myself and the city attorney to execute the permanent and temporary street and utilities easements with the residents located at 1413 Alcott Avenue West.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you. Brent?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Questions, comments?
Over.
Brian? See none? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,794,390. And I would entertain a resolution to pay the bills. Jim? Thank you, sir.
Right.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Justin, second. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director. See none? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,794,390. And I would entertain a resolution to pay the bills. Jim? Thank you, sir.
Right.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Justin, second. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director. See none? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,794,390. And I would